Good evening and welcome to the April 21st, 2025 meeting of the Tuscaloosa City Planning and Zoning Commission. Any written comments sent to staff are forwarded to the commission directly. This time I'd like to introduce our staff. Jimbo Woodson, Deputy City Attorney. Michael Garner, City Engineer. Zach Pons, Director of Planning. Leo DeCoigne, Planner. Lily McIntyre, Special Projects Coordinator. There are nine members of the Planning Commission, all who were appointed by the mayor for staggered terms with the exception of the City Council representative who was appointed by the City Council. I ask that the commission members introduce themselves and state their occupation, starting with Ms. Prince.
Ms. Prince.
Tim Harrison, General Contractor.
Ann Hornsby, Attorney.
Eddie Pugh, Retired.
A Bill Wright Business Owner. There are sign up sheets located outside for public comment. Four speakers are allowed to speak in favor of a petition and four speakers are allowed to speak in opposition of a petition. All speakers will have a maximum of five minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. Tonight's procedures, the commission will take up the items in the order of the final agenda. The commission will initially receive a presentation from the staff as to the details of the agenda item. Additionally, we may hear certain matters involving the same property such as an annexation and a zoning matter concurrently, although we will take separate votes on each matter involving the same property. After the staff presentation, it will then call upon the petitioner to present their case. The petitioner will have a maximum of 10 minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. At the conclusion of the petitioner's remarks, we'll then call upon any party of order who signed up who desire to support the petition. Thereafter, we'll call upon any party in order to sign up those who oppose the petition. At this time, please introduce yourselves stating your name and address to the commission and to provide your remarks and any and any written comments have been included to the record. After receiving the remarks of those who oppose the petition, the petitioner will have the opportunity to respond to those objections. Any rebuttal will be limited to two minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. If the petitioner presents any new information in response to the objections, the commission will allow those who oppose the petition the opportunity to respond to the new information only. Any response will be limited to two minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. During the course of this presentation, you may be interrupted by any member of the commission for clarification or additional information. Such interruptions will not reduce your allow time limit. Once the commission receives, members are satisfied that they have received all relevant information, I will then close further discussion by the public at which time the commission members will discuss the matter and then vote. After the vote, you are free to leave. These proceedings are being recorded and broadcast live. All in-person public comments should be made at the podium into the microphone. Jurisdiction and all matters pertaining to the following items, these commissions serve as the final authority. Subdivisions located within the city limits, subdivisions located outside the city limits, but within the city's planning jurisdiction, and developments with a special district and approval letters for developments in the historic buffer zones. As to all remaining agenda matters including annexations, rezonings, planned developments, and street vacations, this commission serves as a recommending body of the City Council. In that regard, our decisions are in the form of a recommendation to be presented to the City Council. The City Council will make the final decision on those matters. Subdivision's approval require the affirmative vote of six members of the Planning Commission. All matters which are recommendations, the City Council require a majority vote for an affirmative recommendations. At this time, I would ask do any members of the commission have any conflicts of interest as to any agenda matters before tonight? If so, please state for the record. Having heard none, I would ask the staff to confirm on the record that proper notice has been given to all parties in interest as required by law as to all matters for the commission tonight.
It has.
Okay. With that, we will begin with approval of the minutes which we have for synopsis of the March 2025 meeting. I move that we dispense with the reading of the minutes on the same unless there are any deletions, additions, or corrections. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We will begin.
Good evening, Commission. Starting off tonight, we have three subdivisions on the consent agenda. There's no one signed up for these out front.
Okay. Commission for what we have, consent agenda items S-3625, S-3925, and S-4225 on the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
All right, moving into our cases to withdraw, we have four requests tonight. These were withdrawn prior to mailing, so no vote is needed. Moving into our cases requesting to continue, we have one here, S-3725, and the petitioner here is here to request that continuance.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, I'm Michael McGuire. Our client's got a few things that he's working through and we just did not feel like we were ready for the meeting, so asking to continue it to next month.
Any questions for petitioner? Okay, we have a request for S-3725. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it.
All right, Commission, moving into unfinished business. First up, we have a preliminary plat, that's S-2825 Wesley Place Condominiums consisting of nine condominium units and one common space lot, designed approximately .65 acres, located at 430 through 474 Wesley Place, Council District 4. This was continued from last month. You can see here, we're near Central High School, just south of Coliseum Street here. I'm zooming in today, you can see the structure already exists. They're requesting to condo that structure. You can see the existing buildings and layout here. Moving into the floor plans for the various units and floors as well as elevations, there are no variance requests. This did need to be heard since it was unfinished business. We did not receive any public comments. Do you have any questions for staff?
Thank you. Petitioner?
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, Al Cavanaugh, Cavanaugh Engineering. This is one we had originally submitted as townhouses. This was constructed a number of years ago under previous, of course, previous zoning and a previous building code as townhomes. So some of the utilities, you see the sanitary sewers are grouped together, that's no longer allowed, so it was not, couldn't go forward as a townhouse, so we were converting to get to condominiums. Still no changes in the site or the building, it's just condominium was a path to get it where we could sell individual units. This was, I don't know, 10, 12 years ago or so, I guess we built it.
Any questions for petitioner? Thank you.
Is the drawing still the same?
I'm sorry?
This was the same drawing we saw before?
Yeah. I mean, of course, it's got the building elevations, it's got the building elevations with it and the floor plans with it and all that. Before you had, actually, it had, it had before, it had individual lot lines for the townhomes, so it had. It had put each townhome on a lot.
I was thinking we had some other.
So the drawing you had seen before would have had all the lots there.
Okay.
Whereas now the lot's just the unit itself.
Yeah.
Any other questions for petitioner? Thank you. Anyone that would care to speak for or against this petition request? Okay, having heard none. Commission, we have a condominium request for S-2825 Wesley Place Condominiums. No variance request. Do we have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion approved.
All right, Commission, moving into our next piece of unfinished business, this is a companion case, that's 6,005 New Watermelon. This is an annexation and rezoning of 4.99 acres that you all saw last month. You can see we're just east of the dam here on New Watermelon, and zooming in on that lot today, you can see it's primarily vacant. Looking at the annexation request, just to clarify, looking at annexing that piece in to city limits. For the petition, like I mentioned, applicant is looking to annex into city limits for Sunday alcohol sales, sanitary sewer ties, and new construction listed here. This was identified as a primary expansion area and framework. Here are our staff comments on the annexation petition. Moving into the rezoning request, following annexing, they'd like to rezone from SFR1 to GC for general commercial. Here again is that property, you can see it does touch GC to the south, excuse me. Here is the revised site plan we were sent for this month. And moving into revised elevations here, from various angles, you can see that C store as well as those restaurant uses. And moving into the offices, proposed here, some signage. Here's some materials submitted by the applicant, so metal roof, brick walls, gooseneck lighting, et cetera, here, and moving into pavement and parking and landscaping as well. In our future land use map and framework, this is identified as traditional neighborhood edge, that's TN2. This zoning request is not conformed to framework, nor does the use. You can see that here, was identified again as traditional neighborhood edge. Here are permitted uses and general commercial highlighted in yellow, moving through this table here. Since you all heard this last month, we initially received 46 public comments in March. Since then, we've had 32 additional public comments submitted. Do you have any questions for staff?
Any questions for staff? There any variance request on that? There's no variance request.
Can we go back to the staff comments?
Sorry, it will get us there eventually. Oh. Yeah, right there.
Move forward to the passage drawings to the description, building description, please. Go to the next one, please.
Any other requests or questions for staff?
What was the green zoning across the street?
Across, I don't believe you've seen across the street, from my knowledge. You have seen to the south of the property, let me get back to that slide for you. See and see, it was zone GC and MFR, general commercial and multifamily residential to the south.
The bar. The lime green, just remind me what the L, I know it's residential, but what is the L with the new lingo we've got?
It's a lake residential.
Lake residential.
And that property above still in the county?
That's correct.
Question for Mike on the, I know we talked about the traffic study issue previously in last month's meeting. Do you have any updates from your side of the house?
Yes, we did receive a traffic study. We actually, I had a few comments on the traffic study. I've had conversations with both the developer and the traffic engineer. I haven't gotten the revised study, but I believe we're all of a consensus that you will see one full access intersection, the southernmost access, and then the northern will be a directional access only.
Directional for the public meaning?
Sorry?
On, from the directional?
Right in, right out.
Right in, right out only?
Yes.
Okay.
Mike, I've talked to you earlier about this, but to the north of that, with that adjacent neighborhood, I'm assuming that traffic study takes that into account, correct?
Yes.
Any additional questions for staff? Petitioner?
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, Chris Centel, Centel Engineering. I haven't gotten the updated report when they added that, so as soon as I get that, I promise you'll be the first person to get it besides me. So, to incorporate the boat storage, which is a future development. The traffic study suggested, with the traffic count, suggested the center turn lane. We're agreeable to install the center turn lane, which is.
Chris, you're normally not this shy, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
Can you speak up a little bit?
Yeah, let me. It's like, after we received the traffic study, their suggestion was to install a center turn lane on New Watermelon, so we're agreeable to that. So, and then we, after multiple discussions with Mike, we decided, we agreed with him with the exit right only. So, the, we updated the facades of the building from the architect, so you can see that. So, other than that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
So now the, there's a phase two proposed. Is that what I'm understanding?
Well, originally, and we've submitted this all along as the boat storage in the rear, but that's not planned to this date, but we are, I mean, that's a future phase, so, but.
Guess from Mike, how does that affect the traffic study?
With the.
With coming back with the boats, if it's not, if that's not in this phase.
We included that in the traffic study, that's, we're waiting on the updated numbers for that. It's minimal impact, though, so.
Is there any particular reason that we would not go ahead and annex that second phase? I know you're saying you're gonna make a phase two, but why would we not go ahead and do that now?
I'd let the owner.
Let me just say, one thing that a lot of, we always encourage, we have a piece of property in the county, we get a lot of interest from the neighbors about no development, no development, no development. We say, listen, it's to your best interest as a protective measure to bring things in the city. That gives everybody a peace of mind knowing that, one, they're in the city, they have to abide by our zoning laws, our building materials, it protects things. And so we had to try to rationalize to the general public those neighbors that don't want anything. And we say, you know, be careful because if you have a piece of county property and we say no to it, we know what's gonna happen. Owner of the property say, what can I do with it now? Then they do things in the county that really never fits into what we want to have happen in the city of Tuscaloosa. So that's why I'm kinda saying, I think there's a desire to have property in the city, why would we not go ahead and do this now and bring it to the city? Now, I would also say, I would hope if you do come with a phase two, that you would come before us and say, we'd like to annex. Is that, is that your intention, or are you just gonna say, no, we wanna keep that piece in the county?
Well, everything's a negotiation, but right now, we are not sure what the development in phase two exactly is going to be. There's a lot of market research that we have to do into that to confirm that that's what route we want to be right now, it's currently an ideal. So we're not 100% sure that we want to go with that development, and you can't see it from the road, it's completely blocked from this, so we're not sure what we want to do with that back property right now. Our focus, and not only that, we don't even have the funding at the current moment, so our only focus is this development right here.
Where are you gonna stop this development from? The road, where the road, where the road's gonna stop currently?
Currently, the dog groomer, the dog groomer is in the rear, so we would stop it to where she can still access her property.
That's gonna, that's gonna remain?
It's gonna, yes, as long as she wants to stay open.
Can you show us that?
Well, it's on the site plan, we just.
That's on the site plan. I'm trying to understand what the extent of this development would be built out.
There's current, there's currently a driveway right here that accesses her business. It's south of the property line. It's written in the deed agreement that as long as she remains open, the driveway remains open. So we anticipate when we start construction that it'll still remain open, but it'll eventually have to close.
Will it close and use y'all's road?
It will, that's part of the agreement with the landowner to the south. So that is gonna, eventually it's gonna have to, but we don't want to inconvenience her business or interrupt her business, so we would like to remain open during construction. But we are going to give her access to the property, so, and we'll go all the way up to the east property line.
The access, so you're not doing anything to access to the offices and/or what you call the boat storage on this one, right? You're not building that road currently?
We're, we will build that road during our construction process, yes. And it's adjacent to the existing drive. But eventually, we can't have two, we can't have two.
What's the extent of this phase?
That, what you see on the, on the, on the map in front of you.
Well, there's buildings on this map.
Yeah, this is, this area right here is the new dog groomer and her parking lot.
So that's gonna be built?
Yeah.
And the offices also?
Yeah, that's correct. That's correct.
Okay.
And we've had interest in the office too, so it's gonna be built.
All right.
So, one thing I want to point out, if this is the extent of what you plan to build, you're gonna need to make a provision for a fire truck to turn around in front of the In other words, the fire code says that any road longer than, you know, 150 feet or longer, you've gotta have a turnaround for a fire truck, for emergency vehicles.
There's one already there at that residence, it's a big cul-de-sac turnaround. We're not, we're not getting rid of it. We're gonna try to keep there as long as possible so she can tenure her business until this is completed. So, yeah, if you follow that road, we're not gonna do construction past that draw, we're gonna keep her driveway as it is, and there's a circle turnaround right there. Mark hearing, by the way, 1200 down point circle.
Can y'all bring up an aerial of that property now showing that hospital where the current drive is and where that current groomer is, that we're discussing?
So, the new road hook into that.
Can I get rid of the red marks?
So that road, we're seeing the access off New Watermelon, that's the road we're talking about, right?
Yeah, it's, yeah, the existing driveway that goes to the dog groomer. And then, once you get past the east, you see it's got, it's got its own turnaround.
And currently, she's operating her business in the county, so it'll be brought into the city as well.
You're saying that on that road, there's a turnaround already?
Oh, it's, it's very large.
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
Yep, that's it.
It's very wooded, and we want, we'd like it to remain that way as well. And there's about a 15-foot difference in elevation from the front piece of property to the second piece of property, so they're at least 15 feet below us. So, it's very well hidden.
So, yeah, was it ESD? They're okay with that? That works for the fire department?
You said ESD?
Is it, that's the environmental services, I'm sorry, the fire department, do they?
So, that'll be vetted through the LDP process. They'll need to show that with enough detail to satisfy the fire marshal that his fire apparatus can make that turnaround.
We, and we will definitely address that during the LDP process after we meet with fire. So, there is a, well, she's gonna remain open, so we've gotta give her something.
Any additional questions for petitioner? I think we probably have a few people signed up to speak.
Yeah.
Okay, let's hear from our those who signed up.
Chairman, first person to sign up is Joanne Cook.
My name is Joanne Cook, and I live in Lexington Downs. And as a resident, we've tolerated the construction of McWright's Ferry Road because we know it's gonna be wonderful when it's finished. And we have accepted the first service station because it's a done deal. But the prospect of a second service station is a lot to accept. We need space for residential homes, not more convenience stores and service stations, plus the three entrances that we heard about earlier would definitely slow traffic. So I thank you for listening to our concerns.
Mr. Chairman, second person to sign up is Brian Fuller.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commission. My name is Brian Fuller, I live in Saddle Ridge subdivision. Apologize upfront, I'm gonna basically be reading my disorganized dry tribe to you. Trying to keep my comments brief and succinct, I'll be a little poetic and dramatic, and as opposed to trying to justify my objections through talking about the framework or specific zoning codes and regulations, I'm just gonna kinda share my personal thoughts on it. When my family moved back to Tuscaloosa around 20 years ago, two things in particular drew us to the north of the river zone that we moved into. First, the school districts and the property values, you know, those are consistently good. Secondly, it's the quiet, isolated neighborhood environment that we have out there. We have convenient access to the benefits and amenities of the city, but we don't live in a place where we can feel the pulse of that city every minute of every day. So we've got that isolation. Most of the people in that part of town are living in it for the same reasons. We wanted to live out there because it's nice and quiet. In that time, though, there's been a lot of change, particularly along Rice Mine Road. We benefited from having the multiple banks and gas stations, grocery stores, some fast food places, the upcoming Starbucks. It's been nice, but it's also increased the congestion in that whole district. Obviously, the McWright's Ferry Road expansion is an impact in this as well. That'll release some of that stress, but we're looking at changing that congestion to right outside my neighborhood. Most of what was done on Rice Mine was not right on top of residential areas. There's a couple, couple small homes there, there were a couple back behind McDonald's that are no longer there, wasn't right on top of anybody's residence, so that's a little bit of a different change. I do struggle with how we can understand what the traffic flow, what the traffic study impact can be, since the expansion hasn't been completed yet. And again, that's because I don't, I'm not an engineer, I don't understand those things, but I struggle with that a lot. We're talking about traffic studies on an expansion that's not even in existence yet, so I think it's all very hypothetical. I struggle with that. I fully understand and comprehend the city's desire to, you know, recoup financially some of what's being invested in the expansion project, and I think that's what a lot of this is about, it's increased tax, increased revenues. But what I'm concerned about is on the west side of McWright's Ferry, there's a huge swath of land that's county property. When we start developing that, does McWright's Ferry look like the intersection up there at Skyland, McFarland, and 2059 with check cashing places, fast food joints? Oh, we're one hotel away from that on Rice Mine Road, and I'm afraid that's what we're looking at for this. Thank you for your consideration, I appreciate you guys listening.
Your time is about, I appreciate what you said. Let me ask you a question. I made the comment earlier about, you know, this is a county piece of property, and the previous development that we approved, you know, we had a developer that I feel like these gentlemen right here have the wherewithal to make this project happen.
you know, we had a developer that I feel like these gentlemen right here have the wherewithal to make this project happen. And we see the benefits of them being in the city. My, my, my concern, any county property that's in this, within the city's limits, is a potential problem area because if we get things in the city, we can't control things more. We can't realize those, those financial dollars from the tax benefits of that. So, does that concern you that if?
Sure.
What we could get there, as opposed, better devil you know than devil you don't know.
Absolutely, and, and I think when that first development came about, when, when the folks here from our area came and presented to you guys, you kind of told us too bad, so sad, the revenue is, is critical, and, and controlling it's critical. And I understand that. But I would ask that anybody who doesn't live in our neighborhood, if somebody came to you and said, "We're gonna build two gas stations right outside your neighborhood," how do you feel about that? I mean, just, I know people have made arguments about the environmental impact, you know, the trash, noise, and light pollution. You know, there's a whole bunch of different, different variables in that that. Here's what it is. We live in a fairly pastoral community right now. And what we're proposing here, in my opinion, is it's the second step in the Domino Falls of that whole area turning into what we've got on Rice Mine now, so. And the city probably wants that. I'm not sure that the residents do. And it's a shame for us because that's why we chose to live there, because of that, so.
But you do understand that if the property is not annexed, they can, they can build this anyway.
But the, did the county reject it? Isn't that why I came here? Because the county rejected it first? Okay. Yeah, see, we also, I will say, as, as residents, it's hard for us to get information on how things work and what's actually taking place. Because it is, I know you guys have minutes, but the minutes don't break down that sort of thing. And for private individuals to get information about where they've taken this and what's happened is difficult for us. Let's play that on you guys.
Well, staff can often help with those.
Yeah.
Those kind of questions if.
Sure.
If they're addressed to them, because they do know all of that.
Maybe that's, maybe that's our approach in the future, is we need to see what they can tell us more.
Well, but speaking, also speaking as, as from myself as a commissioner, the annexing things into the city is, is not about upping the revenues. I mean, that is a fact and a good, and a good one. But what we're enforcing are the, are the codes and the rules, not, you know, not, not maxing out developments for tax revenue. So, um, you know.
But if we rezone it from, from residential to commercial? That's what we're asking for, is tax revenue. Yeah. I mean, I mean theoretically, a commercial.
That's true. I'm not saying it's not a benefit. I can tell you that, that though, that, you know.
But if the city, if the city held firm on that and said, we'd prefer for it to be a residential development?
It's filled in the county and the county gets it.
Yeah.
So, you know.
I know.
It's one way or the other. It's just effectively.
I hope, I hope that that stretches to the west of McWright's Ferry. We can find some consideration from the city to perhaps encourage some people that want to put residential or something in there so we don't go through.
It's in the county.
I know. Maybe we can, maybe we can persuade somebody to purchase it and annex it that way, though.
Mr. Fuller, I, you know, we, we.
I know.
You're, you're, y'all are just the next group that's come, and, and nobody wants a development adjacent to them. And, you know, I, I get it.
Absolutely.
I, I, believe me, I get it. I'm gonna get it when I get home tonight. But anyway.
Thanks.
The, the gist of this is, what we're trying to do is to control development. And, and while McWright's Ferry Road is a great and wonderful project for the city of Tuscaloosa, it's gonna bring density in our area, and it's gonna bring more density. And there's gonna be some other issues up there because there's several bastions of the county still in McWright's Ferry, particularly between where you're at and the bridge. There's gonna be some more of these prob, prob, projects, and we've got to do a job, what we can to control. And our ability to control it is to bring it into the city. I, I, I wrote the same thing that, about the increase in taxes and increase in tax revenue. That's not on us. I mean, it, it, it is a factor what's going on, but this commission is not going out grabbing things to get money for Tuscaloosa. I promise you that. And it's, you know, if, if, if a private landowner wants to develop a piece of property, and we can see fit to bring it into the city to control it, that's kind of what we're supposed to do, whether we like it or not. I, you know, sometimes you question, why, why would you put two convenience stores right beside each other? They're gonna cut into profits in half. I don't know that, but that's the landowner's rights to do that.
Yeah, I think from our standpoint, one of the things we don't look forward to is all the candy wrappers and the plastic lids that get discarded that blow into our neighborhood, just increasing the trash flow and everything else, so. I do appreciate the dialogue, though. Thank you. And, and I do recognize, I've seen the drawings from this project and the prior one, you know. Fortunately, the drawings that have been submitted do look more like what you see in Hilton Head or some of those places that are very tightly zoned and regulated for something that at least, at least you drive up and you don't think, boy, that's an eyesore. So, we hope that, that at least the drawings are compatible with what we'll see.
Well, the, and that was one thing that we requested. And, and that this area deserved, and that's what we're trying to maintain.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gloria Oglesby?
Good evening. My name is Gloria Oglesby, and I live at forty-one fifty Midway Lane in Lexington Downs. I've lived in that neighborhood for twenty-one years, and I love it there. I want to speak against constructing a second gas station coming out of the entrance of Lexington Downs. We've already had one approved, and we got, we're over that. We know it's gonna be there. But for the, for no reason can we understand that two competing gas stations exactly next to each other, there's no one else in Tuscalo, where else in Tuscaloosa that you will find this. So why do that to a peaceful, nice neighborhood, is our question. The approval of the project will have three entrances onto New Watermelon Road. And I can tell you from living in the neighborhood that I do. I'm frequently on New Watermelon Road. And the speed limit is supposed to be forty-five. But if I drive forty-five, I have someone tailgating me all the time. People don't follow that. We have people going to school in the morning. We have three schools that come, people come down Watermelon, New Watermelon Road, Rock Quarry, the elementary school. And then directly on past that, you have North Ridge Middle School and North Ridge High School. And the new road will not affect that. It'll still all be on New Water, uh, New Watermelon Road. The one that is McWright's Ferry will not affect that because that'll take the traffic across the bridge. So this is a straight shot down New Watermelon Road. The high school students drive themselves, and they're always fast. At the turn lane to go into this, to get coffee and donuts and things like that, you're gonna have oncoming traffic. And there again, in the mornings, even the cars going the opposite direction away from the schools are driving fast. So it's a bad area through there to have people just following the, the regular speed limit. I don't know what it will be at the intersection, but past that, it's, it's fast. And the boat storage, if that's approved, I can just picture a boat being pulled out of that and going across the road down to the lake. So it'll have to cross the lanes of traffic to get there. Also, in Lexington Downs, we have a lot of children. They ride their scooters. They have motorized scooters. They have golf carts. The parents get in the golf carts, and the children drive the golf carts sometimes. And I can just see an accident waiting to happen as they drive in and maybe go across the land, the driveways and all that to get over to a second one if they're gonna get a donut, some, or pizza or something like this. Children are just not careful. And I think that I just worry about that happening. So I appreciate you listening to us. We, we just love our neighborhood, and we just feel like this is just not being considered by the people that want to build, that they're just taking this quietness and this neighborhood peace away from us. So we just want to express that feeling to you. We thank you for listening to us. Okay?
Chairman, last person to sign up is Alan Weldon.
Alan Weldon, forty-two oh five Midway Lane. I've spoken before y'all three times, so I'm sure you're tired of hearing from me. Don't really have any, in fact, I wasn't planned on speaking tonight, and all the folks that have spoken before me have basically laid out all the good reasons for this. You know, we, we always come back to, well, if we bring it into the city, then we have control over. Well, the developer had planned on doing this in the county all along. There was no intention of bringing it into the city. So at some point, he decided it was more profitable for him to bring it into the city, right? So at some point, he could just say, hey, go ahead and build it in the county, and we'll see what happens. I don't believe he'll build it in the county, because then he's gotta build a sewer system, right, to handle all that. So, you know, let them build it in the county. The other issue that you brought up was the, the adjacent property. You asked, why not annex that? Well, there's no way they're gonna annex that because the, the city council will never approve a boat storage place right there. There's no way that they will ever approve a boat storage place there. And so that's the reason. You know, a-again, it's, you're creating a dangerous situation if ultimately they do put a boat storage building there. We've now created a, a runway right here on McWright's Ferry Road in New Watermelon, right? You've straightened out the curves, and now everybody's gonna be driving sixty miles an hour down that road because they don't have to make that curve anymore, which previously killed multiple people, right, which is why we straightened the road. But people are gonna be flying down that road, particularly young people. And all it takes is one boat being pulled out in front of that to create a huge problem. So, anyway. Those are my issues. I won't take any more of your time. Appreciate it.
Hey, that's our, those who are in opposition of it. Ask the petitioner if he has any desire to come address anything they might have heard or want to maybe offer peace of mind to those who are neighbors who have concerns.
I'll take this opportunity. Mark Haring, twelve hundred diamond point circle. I want to assure the residents of Lexington Downs, Saddle Ridge, everyone up there. If they don't know who I am, I'm a developer up, around North River Yacht Club. Those are my developments from Peninsula, Mason Dulack, Neptune's Cove. They'd be more than welcome to ride through there and see our kind of work. The drawings that we, like I said, once we got involved and, and knew what you wanted, Rick did a great job with his guy getting the quality that, that we were gonna do all along. But I understand why we needed to show it, and that's what we did. I don't think you're gonna see a, a better rendering come through here on a, on a service station than what, what we just provided. And I hope that gives our, my residents, my neighbors, peace of mind of, of the quality of work that we're gonna do. Answering the question as far as building in the county, I have no problem building in the county. The sewer system's not that much for a gas station. So I, I just wanted to dispel that rumors all along. The only thing, the only reason why we want to put it in the city is because I'm a resident here. I want the city to do well. I, we want the Sunday liquor sales for the city. I mean, I, I, as far as putting it in the county, we don't have a problem with that. But I think the city, uh, this would benefit the city as, as much as anything, to have this in the city limits. Plus, and I still don't think that the residents quite understand that we wouldn't have to do nothing like this standard if it was in the county. We could put a shack up there with a tin roof on it, and I could save, we could save a lot of money. So if we were selfish, that's what we would do. We're trying to do the right thing. We want it to be nice. We want it to be something the city's proud of. We want it to be something that the, uh, the people in North River are proud of. I live there, so I, you know, I'm vested there. I want it to be nice as well. Hope that answers any questions.
I don't have a question, but I, I do have a comment about the zoning. So, this is a hard one, because I would like for it to be rezoned in the city. But I think to give the, the community and the neighbors and the residents some peace of mind, I would like to see both pieces of property rezoned.
And I understand that, Rick, I do. But that's, that's a separate project. Let us do our homework on that. I'm not saying we're not, but let us do our homework and make sure what we're gonna do. Because right now, this is our, so, this is gonna cost a lot of money. We're, we're, we, we're gonna have to see, and plus, I also want to keep that business open that's open now. Because if we started that anytime soon, she'd have to shut that down. So I wanna, I wanna concentrate on this project, since there's separate parcels. Then we'll address the next parcel once this is completed.
What, what is the, um, and, and, this is curiosity as much as anything, I think. Why do service stations locate next door to each other? What, what is the point?
That would be a better question for Rick. This is what he does for a living. And, and to be honest with you, we submitted ours first through the city.
Right, but, you, you know.
So I'm, I'm just.
It's an interesting business.
I get it. Well, I mean, this is what Rick does for a living. I don't think the other developer does. We good? Anything else?
I, I don't have any qualms that you will build a, a great development. You've done it before. I've known you for years. I trust your ability and, you know, and all that. Here is my qualm about it. First and foremost, framework has designated it as residential. And I know that there are only so many places that we can put new houses right now. And that is one of, you know, going towards the yacht club is definitely a place with vacant land that could be developed for residential purposes. So it scares me to read, to rezone something commercial, especially when there's a commercial concern right next door. Okay, when we got this, and I reread it today, okay, y'all are petitioning to rezone it in order to connect a city sewer and to provide for Sunday liquor license. Okay, if you stay in the county and build it in the county, of course, you, you just said you could build a sewer system that wouldn't be much of a problem for you. Could you have your Sunday liquor sales in the county?
No. Go ahead.
Ms. Prince, we, we will not be serving liquor here.
Oh, yeah, and that's for, I guess it'll be in the convenience store.
But we, at no point would this property be serving any liquor. It'll be for beer sales only.
Okay, well, it said liquor, right?
Sunday sales.
Just Sunday sales, okay, okay. Well, yeah, I knew, I, I knew it was gonna be beer. I'm sorry, I misspoke, but I, I was just thinking.
But Ms. Prince, to your point, even Sunday sales would not be allowed in the county.
Say that again.
Sunday sales wouldn't be allowed in the county, period, regardless of what it, what type of beer, wine, liquor, whatever.
Yeah.
Can, I mentioned a couple of things, and I hope this does bring some peace of mind to what I believe will be my customers out there. It's cheaper for us to build this in the county. A lot cheaper for us to build this in the county. Since we came back and re, redid the layout and the structure and the design, that added about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to our cost redoing it. The canopy alone's about thirty percent of that. We've been, us staying in the county, it benefits us. We get cheaper sales tax that benefits us. We get cheaper field tax that benefits us. It benefits us to stay in the county. There's, there's no reason why we would not build this. We would still build this. The only difference is we would have a competitive disadvantage in one area. We'd have competitive advantage in other areas, but we would have a competitive advantage in one, in, just in one area. So, um, talked to a lot of people out there. I really believe these people will be, will benefit from the convenience of having coffee out there, from the convenience of having pizza that's delivery, that's delivered out there. And I've talked to a lot of residents that are out there that are really for this, these services that are much needed out there. So this is definitely beneficial for the people, the residents of that area. And as y'all said before, it, it gets built no matter what. It's just, does it look beautiful? Does it look good? Is it restricted, like the city need, uh, plans to restrict it, or is it a free-for-all? And, uh, to me, it, it seems like it's a given to approve this development. So I hope that brings some peace of mind.
I will say, even if we build in the county, I'm still gonna build it nice.
Alright, anyone? All right, anyone? I don't think anything new is brought up, so we don't need to bring anybody back up for rebuttal comments. But we'll close to public comments, have a conversation amongst this commission, and start taking our votes.
I just always like it when the city can control buffers, building codes, designs, lighting. Something's going to go there, and if it's not this, it could be, always, my big deal is I hate apartments, you know? It could be apartments, it could be anything. I just see, that's going to be a main thoroughfare. When McRice Ferry Road is complete, this isn't going to put any more traffic on there than it's going to be on there. There's going to be traffic on that road, because all up towards the yacht club, I can see a grocery store, and no telling what happens up towards the yacht club and all up that way. It's, this is a start. This isn't an end. This is the start of the destruction up that way. And if the city can control it, like I said, design, building codes, buffers, city engineer can have some say-so. I just think it's one way to protect a little bit that the city can protect the property owners and people up that way.
Since we, we have to vote on what's the agenda item, I just think for so many reasons, there are more pros than cons to have this annexed into the city. And I do believe that this is just the beginning. I believe that we will see a lot more. And I hope that the city can regulate those businesses also, or their business interests, so.
Well, I certainly understand all the protections that are afforded when somebody comes into the city. But like I said, my qualm is the rezoning to something that Framework has not recommended. And, you know, I don't always vote for Framework, but I do see the benefit in voting with Framework, because they know more about it than I do. They've paid a lot of money for their services. So I'm very torn, because I certainly understand where y'all are coming from. I want the protection of the city. But I want to use land for the purposes that our consultants have advised us to use it for a while. There's just, so, um, this is a tough one for me.
Zach, Framework went on forever. I mean, I don't remember how many years it took. But as Framework was being developed, how far ahead were we looking as far as the development of McRice Ferry Road and this being residential or whatever?
Yeah, that's a good question. Framework was approved February 2021, the conference had planned. So I don't know when we really started the design and the public comment for the McRice Ferry Road project. Do you, do you know?
I think McRice Ferry has been in a, was conceptualized probably 15 or 20 years ago. Coming to fruition, 2016, I believe, is the year that the project was initiated with the city.
Now, to Ms. Prince's point about Framework and how we saw it be residential, you know, I think personally, we're seeing areas that are getting high traffic, roads, and we have property right on the road. We're sitting on 15th Street, a lot of this property that one time was residential. And it's not conducive for residential any longer. And I, this is ultimate concern about McRice Ferry and New Watermelon, is that facing property on those roads seems to be a challenge for residential. A five-acre parcel, you know, what residential could be built there that's safe, that's viable? And I go back to my earlier comment about the county, and again, we're going to get two gas stations down the way. And I think the pros, as Ms. Howard says, is there's more pros than cons. Again, I understand the neighbors not being in favor of it. No one ever likes new development around. We hear it every, every time a development comes up for us. But if we had that mindset of closing everything off, we'd never have any developments. But this area is right. It's going to change. I mean, McRice Ferry is going to open up the entire North River area for development. So this is not the end. This is the beginning. And I just think that knowing what we're going to get, you know, control it, have a developer that's going to abide by regulations in our laws, I think is more of an advantage than a disadvantage. So that's kind of where I want. Any other comments from the commission? All right. Having heard none. Commission, before us, we have companion case, 605 New Watermelon Road, an annexation request, requesting to annex 4.99 acres located at 605 New Watermelon Road. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion approved.
Okay, Ms. Prince?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion approved. Commission, before us, we have Z 0825, North River Crossings LLC, petitions rezoned the 4.99 acres from SFR 1 to GC. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Yes. So motion hasn't. Go with it. Okay, motion approved.
We'll give folks a few minutes to get out of here. All right, are we ready for the cases to be heard tonight? Starting off with a rezoning request, we have Z 0925, Ricky Sherrod, petitions for, petitions, excuse me, to rezone approximately 0.56 acres located at 2835 and 2837 Culver Road from SFR 2 to NC Council District 1. You can see here, we're on Culver Road and 29th Street. Looking at the properties today, they own all three on this corner here. You can see the main corner is Neighborhood Commercial. The other two properties are SFR 2. Those are the two they're looking to rezone, and here's the aerial view of those properties today. Here's some additional photos taken by staff of those two properties. You can see they're fenced in. So the petition, the advocate would like to rezone from SFR 2 to NC to allow for business growth. And here again are those two properties. We had no plans submitted at this time. This is identified as suburban residential in Framework, so this is not conformed to the zoning in Framework, nor the intended use. And here again are those two properties identified as suburban residential. Here are permitted uses in Neighborhood Commercial. We received two public comments in opposition to this petition. Do you have any questions for staff?
Nope. Petitioner?
Good evening, Council and Commission. This property, what we're talking about is really, the front property is a deadlocked property.
Name and address for the record, please.
Sorry. Ricky Sherrod, 11611, Albrook Roads, Port Alabama, 35475.
Thank you.
The property on the front, it's a deadlocked situation. You can't get an annex to a road to it. So adjacent with the commercial property, which we need to enhance for growth. And we've came in and done a very much improvement to the community. And this business is on open from 8:30 to 5:00 every day, so that's sort of where we're at.
What is the business?
Ma'am.
What kind of business is it?
It's a vault and monument company.
A what now?
Vault and what?
Monument company.
Monument, okay.
Monument, yes.
So, Ms. Sherrod, the, the, what, what did you say the reasons for this one?
Reason, we need to expand. We need more room for storage.
You said something about access, too.
On the property that we're talking about, I think it's 2835, that sits against 2837, that property, you cannot put a house there, because it don't have an easement to the road. You would have to come through 2837 to get out, so it's a deadlocked property.
Can you show me which piece property?
That would be the property, I guess where the X is at.
You can't get access off Culver Road?
No, you cannot get to it off Culver Road. You can get to, you can get to it off Culver Road only through the vault company, and the property is commercial right now. That's the only way you can get to that property. It'll adjacent with the commercial.
You can cut a driveway off Culver.
No, city don't allow a driveway to go in.
Have you talked to the state about this?
Sure.
So Culver Road is US Highway 11. So it, you would need to talk to the state of Alabama's Department of Transportation. They would be the ones who would approve or deny an access.
So I mean, would that even, they can deny residential access off of it?
I wouldn't think so, no, sir.
I wouldn't really need access to it, because.
I'm talking about if it's in its current zone.
Okay.
Any questions for petitioner, Ms. Prince?
No.
You look like you had a question coming.
Well, I'll ask the staff. I have a question, but.
You want to ask staff?
Well, I'll ask. All right, so the property where the vault and monument company is, that is zoned NC already?
Right, so this is zone NC where the building is, and then this area is fenced in already as part of this property. So I believe they've been utilizing it for the company already. When we were going through Framework, in hindsight, you know, it wouldn't be inappropriate for this one to be Neighborhood Commercial, because it already is kind of tied into that business right here, through the fence and the same property owner.
So this is the, so Culver Road is Highway 11. This kind of goes to my comment earlier about heavily traveled roads having a realistic chance of being residential. Now, I think we're right about that. If somebody did want to build a house on that 2837, they could. And I think the state would allow them a driveway. However, I still think we're starting to see more of this commercial growth happening on highly traveled roads, and it might have ever become a residential. But if we got a chance to take a business and add some value to the city, whether it be through tax revenues or just good ownership and good management, I think that's more positive than unknowns of ever having a residential house built in certain roads, so.
Zach, what, if we, what are we triggering buffer-wise here, if we did this?
Right, yeah, so they would have a buffer. It would be, I believe it's 15 or 20 feet. I'll look it up here in just a second. I also just wanted to clarify a point that you had mentioned about the, the storage. So expanding the storage, it would have to be in a structure. There's no, there's no ability to do outside storage, even in NC. So even if these properties were rezoned, the outside storage piece is not going to be permitted. But I will look that up, the buffer.
So clarify, when you, we know what their business is, so basically either vaults or monuments would have to be in a structure.
Right.
You're clear on that, Ms. Sherrod?
No, I'm not clear. Help me.
Yeah, so my understanding, so this was a code enforcement issue, because there were monuments and vaults on the property being stored at X. And so you had to address that by removing those. I mean, that was on this property as well. So NC does not allow that. So you would just have to store all that stuff inside. I think they discussed that with you when, when you were going through that process.
Right, but that's why I'm here tonight, to speak with the chairman and the commissioner, and see, and can that be, because it's no good for anything else. The property next to it, it's just sitting there. Can't put a house there?
Yeah, I got you. We talked about that, though, where you still wouldn't put your out, you still couldn't put your monuments and things like that out here.
Why couldn't?
Oh, I mean, we discussed this previously before this meeting.
Saying, why couldn't we, because.
We're not going, we're not going to get in the realm of code enforcement, and we're just, we're here to talk about rezoning the property. Where you could do, take those parcels and use them as a commercial use. If it's an issue where those things still have to be within, inside a structure, then that's going to be with the code enforcement office. We have no.
So it can't be commercial at all? It can't be, it can't be commercial at all? You can't put anything there?
No, yeah, we, it's just the vaults and things like that can't just be stored out on the lawn. And we'll work with you on that. I mean, you can put it in a structure. You can have accessory structures, things like that, that allow you to do that stuff.
Okay.
I have a question for the petitioner. So the purpose of the rezoning is to rezone these pieces of property so that you can add additional storage, but the storage won't be outside? It'd be.
Well, the storage is, you know, you got monuments outside, so you need excessive space.
Okay, so you need more space to build a structure.
They're tangible, so they're movable, you know, they're not going to be permanent items, you know? The property right now, we can't do nothing but just mow it and keep it clean, and just, you know, that's all we can do with it. I don't, sure enough, you can build a house there, whatever you can do.
And one of the things that, it was a business on Greensboro Avenue that sold headstones, and they sat up right in front of the building.
I was going to ask about that. That's Clark Memorial on Greensboro Avenue, and are they zoned in a, I guess there, are they?
I'm not familiar, but that could be another code enforcement issue that we're just not aware of at this time.
And then just knowing the nature of what's going on on Greensboro Avenue is surrounded by more businesses.
Correct.
As opposed to this, and this, this is becoming a bit difficult, because I can see in the future where there, there might be more possibilities or interest for businesses on Highway 11. However, it is so many residences there, so you want the right kind of business, something that definitely is Neighborhood Commercial. But, you know, so you want the business, but you don't want it to be too invasive, because this is still a nice residential area without, I mean, the place, Clark Memorial, is just surrounded by businesses already. So I could see if that was a different zoning than this is, but I don't know.
Okay.
As for the landscaping, so they have two options here. It'd be 40 feet from that residential, and then obviously some landscaping, or 20 feet with some landscaping and a wall.
20 feet with landscaping and what?
And a wall, like a masonry wall.
So 20 feet, and then what was the other?
Some landscaping, like trees and shrubs, and then a wall as well, at least six feet in height.
Well, it doesn't sound like to me that rezoning the property is going to help Mr. Sherrod if he needs to be outside, if he needs his things to be outside.
Right, which we discussed outside of this meeting.
I mean, what, there is, there's, is there any zone where you could do that outside?
What'd you say? I'm sorry.
Is there any zoning?
Yeah, there is, but they would be more, you know, intrusive to neighborhoods. And, and per the public comment that you received, you know, that we forwarded you guys, that was one of the biggest concerns about the rezoning request, was the outside storage of monuments and vaults and stuff, so. So that's kind of, if that's his goal for rezoning this, I mean, my understanding was he, was, there was an understanding that that's not going to be allowed either way, but I don't know. There might be some miscommunication here between us.
But he will have to construct some kind of accessory.
Right, yeah, they could do an accessory structure. They could expand the existing building that's there, you know, to create more storage. to create more storage, things like that. They just wouldn't be able to put it outside.
Well, that does seem to address the neighborhood concerns, right, which it were complaints about.
And then we get this, also with the, with that, you know, back to being in the city, there are certain building requirements, standards that you'd have to meet, so. Question would be, is it cause prohibitive to do this? That's why, I mean, y'all need to know that better than I would.
We're saying about the traffic or anything like that, we're right behind B.F. Goodrich. It's on the side of the road.
Yeah.
It's commercial. No tra, the traffic is not coming from that side. Like, wherever the traffic in, right down from us is a power station. You got a big electric station there, there's no, no turning around or nothing there, so.
I don't think traffic's our issue. I think the issue really is ultimately what you sound like you want to do. There's a disconnect between you being able to do it based on what we're saying, that code enforcement is going to say, you can't just have this extra land to put out your product in the, in the lot. You have to have a structure to put it all in, so.
Yeah.
You know.
You, you know, thinking of things like monuments and stuff like that, you wouldn't build a building and put monuments in, you know?
Code's, code's saying you'd have to do that.
Yeah, okay.
That's, that's the thing, I mean, I don't think you realize what they're saying is that you're going to have to build a structure to put these things. You can't just park them in the lot, even in behind the lot.
So, so the, so the property, if I was to put a bill in there, can it be commercial?
It would be commercial.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Because that's the zoning, neighborhood commercial.
If we rezonate right now.
Right, right.
Right now, the, the two lots are residential.
Okay, so, what will I need to do to put a bill in there?
Zach, Zach was saying, staff can work with you to, to explain what would be permitted there.
Right.
Okay.
I think, you know, if you're open to continuing this case, or maybe we can, we can discuss this outside of this meeting and, and see what the next steps are to clarify this. I don't think it's, it was clear prior to this meeting.
Correct.
And then we could hear...
Yeah, a lot of times we recommend it, there's uncertainty and nothing being very clear. We do recommend, let's, let's, let's withdraw it for the moment, meet with staff and get to fully understand what has to be done. Because then if you build a, want to build a building, then we got to, uh, do a lot consolidation if you want to build a larger building than you currently have. So, there's lots of variables I think that maybe you're not fully aware of. It'd be best to, I would recommend, I think staff kind of agrees with this. If you're agreeable to that, you would say, I would like to withdraw this case so I can work with staff and come back for you later.
I, we'll continue.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, there's no... Continue, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, continue.
Before you leave, Mr. Sheridan, before you leave.
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't know, you know, like Zach mentioned, that, you know, in hindsight, maybe the, the lot that's behind you to the east probably should have been recommended to be neighborhood commercial, okay? Would that be enough property to get the storage that you need with the building? Because, see, this, this other lot that's running on Culver Road, you know, that's where all this residential property is. And, you know, I don't know if you're listening to me on the case before you, but I, I really try to adhere as much as I can to what the framework has proposed. So, maybe talk to them about your needs and see if they can be satisfied by that lot that's to the east of you, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Prince.
Before we vote to continue this, there were two people that signed up to speak. We would allow, let them speak and let, you can hear their concerns as well to take that into consideration when we meet with staff. So, Mr. Harrison, we have two people that have signed up.
Chairman, first person, John Martin.
Excuse me, but I think it's my first time coming, I don't know this, but I just told you.
Let's, let's, let's hear what, we'll give you an opportunity to hear.
Good evening. I'm John Martin, reside at fifty-two oh eight Twenty-Ninth Street, which is the property on the corner, the east of the property I was just talking about. And we have a... Okay. So, I didn't have any idea what the rezoning was all about and the purpose of it. So, I oppose it, okay? And even from what I'm hearing right now, I just want to say the property between my property and where the commercial property is now, there was an access road on Twenty-Ninth Street, uh, that can go into that property. At one point, it was a mobile home on that property, and it was a driveway there until the fence was put up, which blocked that driveway off. So, if that was going to be used as a residential property, that access can be redone from Twenty-Ninth Street. Now, for us to Culver Road property, I'm not familiar with the access to that, okay? But the reason I oppose is because I didn't know what the purpose of rezoning, and I just didn't want anything coming next to, well, in my backyard. And I've been there for a little over thirty-five years. Thank you.
And Mr. Martin, just to be clear, your house, you know, I know the area well. Your house is the house on the corner, correct?
On the corner of Twenty-Ninth and, uh, Greensboro Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, next person's signed up, Paul Rollins, Jr.
Thank you.
Good evening, board. Uh, my address is fifty-two twenty-six Grandview Drive, and it's the lot right next to Brother Martin's house. I used to have a house on that lot, uh, but it burned down, and I do plan on rebuilding a residential property back on that lot. I signed up in opposition because I had a few questions. And the board and the city did answer some of those questions, but mainly, one question was about the buffer between the commercial and residential. Also with the, the lighting. So, if there's going to be lighting, will it be directional lighting on the commercial side and not flood lighting that'll bleed over to our property? And for the accessory structures, for housing of the monuments and vaults, is there a height limit? So, are we going to, if it's approved, or wants to continue if it's approved, will it be just a one-story building? Can they go up two stories, three stories? Those are just a couple of issues that I, a question that I had, uh, as far as the property. And aside from that, as far as the monuments having to be outside for the sales, you don't have to have the monuments outside for sales. You can show them off a computer. Uh, I, I sell monuments also, so I can show you everything on a computer, I can design on a computer, you approve it, and, and that's it. But those are the main questions, I have the buffer, the height of the accessory structure, if it's approved, to make sure everything's inside, and, uh, the lighting. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. That will definitely be addressed with, with petitioners. Well, I had two that did sign up, but if you did make a trip here and you would like to have a comment, we do have two more slots available to make a comment. So, if you'd like to make a comment, please come forward. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Sheridan Kirkman, and I stay right next to the twenty-eight thirty-five. I'm the owner of twenty-eight thirty-one. And when I purchased that home, right eighteen years ago, it was deeded off that I had thirty-one and thirty-five. So, it got deeded back to the seller, and the seller sold it to a woman that he purchased the property from. So, Mr. Sharad knew from day one how that property was coded. He knew it. So, he's not that, he didn't know that it was residential and which part was commercial because he knew. He come over and introduced himself, and then he asked and he cut that tree down that was in between the both of us and put up that fence. I'm opposed to it. Right next to my house is my two kids that I have with me, and we've been residing there for eighteen years. He has had those monuments and those vaults for almost a year. It took complaints to come today to have that vaults and monuments removed off that premise. So, he done it for almost a year until the complaints come in to have those removed. My kids' bedrooms are on that side by that fence. They're terrified, they have nightmares, they have not slept in their rooms for almost a year. It's time for them to move out the den and be able to be comfortable in their bedrooms. So, he knew from day one that he wasn't able to get a right of way. It comes off the other side that they fenced in, so I'm opposed to it. I, I don't see no benefit, and he clearly stated he just bought it for storage. So, what's the sense in rezoning? It's been zoning like that for years and it needs to stay residential. They're even cleaning off on the other side of Twenty-Ninth, building in houses. So, what's the sense in rezoning that for storage? So, I'm opposed to it.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, we have one, one more slot available to make a comment. Name and address for the record, please.
How you doing? I'm Aaron Jones, I live at twenty-eight twenty-seven Culver Road, right next to her. And, um, I understand, I've been listening to, um, what's been talked about, and I understa, my main concern is the vaults. We, we're not talking about little monuments like headstone, we're talking about big vaults, you know, that he lines up beside that fence. You know, it looks bad, it looks tacky. I've been living there about two years, and I put a lot of money into my property, you know? I'm just not interested in having that sitting out there like that.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, uh, we'll close, and we do have a request for continuance by the petitioner, which I think that would be very helpful to him, working with our staff, to really understand the challenges of his request. So, that being said, Commissioner Forrest, we have a continuous request for Z zero-nine twenty-five. All those that pair say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
All right, Commissioner, we're going to move into our next item here. This is a rezoning request, Z ten twenty-five, Bill Lunsford Construction and Development, Inc. Petitions to rezone approximately point-two-five acres located at fifteen-ten Seventeenth Avenue East from SFR three to GC, this is Council District Five. You can see we're just east of Home Depot here, south of Veterans Memorial Parkway. You can see that property today is SFR three, touching some other SFR three as well as general commercial. Here's that property from above, there is an existing home here, and here's a photo of the property today. Uh, the petition here, the applicant is requesting to rezone from SFR two to NC to allow for light commercial slash office use. Um, and here's some additional information submitted by the applicant. Property's been vacant for over a year, it's about sixteen hundred square feet, and it has a interesting layout of a one-bedroom, um, probably contributing towards that issue with renting, they state in their letter. Uh, you can see a, a potential site plan here for what the office use could look like on this site using that existing building. It's identified as a traditional neighborhood edge. Uh, some light commercial does conform with, uh, framework here as well as the use. And here is that zoning here. For our permitted uses, uh, you can see GC highlighted in yellow. We did not receive any public comment, do you have any questions for staff?
Thank you. Petitioner?
Good evening, Brandon Clark, twenty-two oh one Maxey Thomas Way. Uh, I'm here as an agent for Mr. Lunsford, who couldn't be here tonight. I do want to clarify, too, um, the application was for GC zoning, uh, for this property. I think it was listed a couple of different ways, uh, on the slideshow. But this is an interesting house, it's over a hundred years old. Uh, Mr. Lunsford asked me to take a look at it, and, uh, he had bought it for an employee to help with their housing needs several years ago. Uh, that employee's no longer using the property, and he's been vacant for some time. He has been able to, to lease it or sell it. It's a nice brick, about sixteen hundred square foot house, but it's just a one-bedroom house with a den, a breakfast room, a living room, a sunroom, and a formal dining room. So, not really conducive, uh, for residential use, plus with all the commercial around it. Um, GC, uh, to one side, in front and behind. The property on both sides are owned by LLCs, the properties front and back are owned by LLCs. So, you know, we felt that a way to breathe some life back into this property and get it back into, uh, you know, back into the, into circulation, so to speak, would be a, a nice, you know, office use for the property, being right there on Fifteenth Street.
Jimbo. When a, a use variance, when you have to show hardship to the property, does that extend to the structure that's on the property? Or is it just the property itself?
The structure as well, but that's only for zoning board of adjustment.
Well, that's what I'm, but that's what I'm getting at. I mean, to me, this, this property could potentially qualify for a use variance.
So, our new code, um, really pushes against the zoning board of adjustment allowing use variances. So, that's kind of something that we're pushing away from in the city, is use variances.
Never mind that out of here.
Mr. Wilson, you got a comment?
I was going to say that it would be, it'd be difficult to make illegal hardship out of that. It's more of an inconvenience.
Goes to my earlier comments, tw, third time now, about how we're seeing more commercial requests along heavily traveled thoroughfares. We see it on Forest Lake at Fifteenth Street. We're going to see more of this, I, I just think some of these houses there are just not really conducive for residential in longer. I mean, Fifteenth Street was two lanes, maybe so, but now we're here, we've got, what's it, six lanes? We're going to see more of this, I hope we need to come up with some kind of standard about how we're going to keep addressing it. We're going to see more of this, too, this is the beginning, not the end, of, of these types of requests. Uh, and just seeing the commercial around it, 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 it seems logical to me. Any other questions for, that's a more of a comment than it was a question, but, um, any questions for petitioner or staff? You said no one did sign up for this? Last chance for questions of petitioner. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. So, no one, does anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? All right, haven't heard none. Commissioner Forrest, we have Z ten twenty-five, Bill Lunsford. Petitions to rezone at fifteen-ten Seventeenth Avenue East from SFR three to GC. Do you have a motion and a second?
Motion approved.
Second.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion approved.
All right, Commissioner, we'll move into our first companion case tonight. That is Brookwood Parkway, this is an annexation and rezoning, uh, five-hundred-and-eighty-three acres located north of I-20 and west of Brookwood Parkway. Starting with the annexation, you can see we're out kind of by the Mercedes plant. Uh, you can see those, uh, properties to be annexed here, um, as well as on the annexation map here. Uh, they're requesting to annex in the city limits for a proposed industrial development. Uh, this area is not identified in framework, um, and here are our department comments. Um, moving into the rezoning, this will be a rezoning from SFR one to IH. Uh, you can see again, looking at the same area here, uh, rezoning to IH for a proposed industrial development. Uh, and here is an exhibit submitted by the petitioner. Uh, again, this side area is not identified in framework, um, and here are the permitted uses in IH. Uh, we did not receive any public comment, do you have any questions for staff?
Ma'am, thank you. Petitioner?
Good evening, Jason Walker with TTL twenty-eight ninety Rice Mine Road, Northeast Tuscaloosa, uh, representing Westervelt Realty on this petition. Uh, as noted from staff, uh, this is for a potential industrial development and probably, uh, this corridor in general, at the time that Mercedes was developed, was probably envisioned to have more of this type development with the infrastructure in place, water and sewer that was run out for Mercedes, but also for potential other developments. So, uh, it's in a great position from an access standpoint, infrastructure. Uh, if there's any limitations on the development, it's really related to the topography, some of the, you know, anything that you develop large tracts of property. And so, while it's a large tract, a lot of the development would happen interior to the property. So, while that's a, you know, a heavy industrial request use, it's probably related to the height more than anything and not necessarily uses that you would think for in the zoning code in a lot of instances, uh, related to, uh, the heavy industrial zoning. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can.
Back to the aerial. There's one side easement on the back.
There's one side easement on the back of the pile.
Yeah, it's a transmission line.
The Spring Branch Road, is that an active road? I mean, it's...
Spring Branch?
Spring Branch?
It's a stream.
No, it's, go back, go back to the previous one. I thought I saw Spring Branch Road. See, Spring Branch?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, that's, that's, no, that's an oil and gas road. I've never noticed that.
I saw some plots cleared out. Is that wells, you think?
Yeah, they're abandoned well sites. There's no active well sites in there.
Just let's name this in the inventory. Any other questions for petitioner or staff?
So is contiguous to the Mercedes property, is that how it's?
Yes.
And so, I mean, I remember this when we... Hate to say this in public, but lassoed in Mercedes to get it into the city limits way back in the day. So, is this part of what I'm seeing as IP and HC? Is that part of 2059?
Yeah, so the zoning goes to the middle of the road.
I remember.
So these aren't really, it's just what might have been in there.
Yeah, oh yeah, I remember all that.
Pretty good lasso.
I'm prob, yeah. I'm probably the only one old enough to remember when that was done, but it was... Yeah, that's, they had to do it. Well, good though. Taking advantage of that lasso, weren't we?
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Walker. Anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? Having heard none. Commissioner Forrest, we have annexation and a rezoning here. We have annexation of 0625, the 583 acres located I-20 west of Brookwood Parkway. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion approved.
All those in favor say aye of the annexation. Aye. Those opposed, Buckland City. Commissioner, we have for Z-1125, Westervelt, petition to rezone the 583 acres. SFR1 to IH. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Motion approved.
Alright Commissioner, our next companion case tonight is Marjam Subdivision. This is a subdivision, annexation and rezoning. I'm gonna go out of my usual order here, starting with the subdivision here. It's 5.6 acres. This is a lot consolidation at and around 2712 South Side Drive. You can see here, we're west of 359. And here's those properties today. You can see there's some existing structures here. And you can see there really was cleaning up a lot of remnant lot lines consolidating into one lot. And to just point out before we move on, this is the piece to be annexed and rezoned is currently in the county and part of this subdivision here. Here's that plat without contours. No variance requests. You're hearing this one because of the annexation and rezoning associated with it. So moving into the annexation here, again, .15 acres. You can see there's just a sliver of this subdivision that is in the county today. They'd like to bring that in as part of that subdivision. You can see that outlined here. Just again, annexing in companion with the subdivision case to provide that lot consolidation. Just showing that again here. In 2021 framework, this is identified as a primary expansion area. And here are our department comments for this annexation. Lastly, the rezoning here, so they'd like to rezone from SFR1 to IG to have that whole lot have consistent zoning. So you can see, it already touches IG here as part of that adjoining subdivision. So again, just trying to get it to match. In framework, this area was identified as industrial, so this does conform with the plan and use. And you see that here. Here are our permitted uses in IG. We did not receive any public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
Petitioner?
Good evening Commissioner. Eric Hamner with TTL, representing ANRLNC and Richard Henry on this. Don't really have anything to add to staff's presentation. I'll take any questions you have.
Any questions for petitioner? Thank you very much. Anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? Alright, having heard them. Mr. Wilson, can we take him up in annexation first? Do we need to follow any order? Alright. Commissioner Forrest, an annexation request, 0725, the annex .15 acres located 2533 28th Street. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
All those in...
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, Buckland City. Commissioner will take up Z-1225, AR LLC, petition to rezone the recently annexed .15 acres. SFR1 to IG. A motion and a second.
Motion.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion approved. Commissioner Forrest, we have subdivision S-4325, Marjum Subdivision. Consisting of one lot at 2712 South Side Drive. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion. Second.
Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion approved.
Alright Commissioner, moving into our preliminary plat tonight. First up, we have S-3525 Snyder Acres Number 2, a resurvey of lots 3 and 5 Snyder Acres. This is consisting of five lots on approximately 72.8 acres located east of D Cunningham Road and south of McLean Farm Road. This is not in city limits. We're north here on 87. You all have seen this property before. It came before you for a subdivision earlier this year. You can see they're just re-subdividing that, creating five more lots here. Looking at it, just flipped on its side here for some additional detail. You can see those five lots they're creating and without contours as well. We have five variance requests here. We did not receive any public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
Can you see the zoning request again? I mean, the variances? Okay, thank you.
Engineering?
We have no issues with those requests.
Petitioner?
Kevin Hinkle with Montgomery Hinkle, Inc., 203 Hargor Road East, Tuscaloosa 35401, representing Westervelt Realty. That they were approached with people wanting to buy state-sized lots after we broke that property off and divided it by the roads. So, it's, is what you see.
Any questions for the petitioner? Thank you sir. Anyone care to speak for or against this petition request, please come forward. Well, please come forward and state, come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record and make your...
Kellyan Oles, 14546 Watermelon Road. So, my dad's property butts up to Snyder Acres. So when this all started, there was, you know, stakes put out. So I'm like, I don't, I don't exactly understand. They literally come three foot out of his back door, right? So I talked to Mr. Snyder and said, hey, you know, what's your plans for this land? What's going on? From what I can tell right now, if you're buying this property, it's literally three foot outside of my dad's back door. He said, no, 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 no. It's, it's on the left. So, a representative from Westervelt came out. We walked the property. He says, no, this tree that's marked right here goes straight back to D Cunningham. It does not involve your dad's property, right? Like, this tree, straight back to D Cunningham, and that will be 10 acres. And I was like, oh, well, there's nothing to worry about. However, after that, the stakes got put out into the field behind my dad's house. It's not his field. He doesn't own that field. But now, it is essentially cutting off almost all of my dad's property of her driveway. And, after all this started, I went back and looked. And on my dad's deed, it's got an acre. And they have it drawn out as .53. So these records are saying .53, but my dad's deed to his land says an acre. So I don't know where to get started. But I would hate, and, and, and I have no problem with the lines. I just don't want any property to be sold. And then low and behold, it's my dad's. TMI, but my dad's got brain cancer. He'd be here. But I'm trying to handle this for him. And I can't make it make sense.
It's gonna be more of a legal question than a engineering question, I believe. What do y'all?
So yeah, this is a, this is obviously a question of where the boundary line between two ownership lie. Obviously, this, this commission, you don't have any jurisdiction or making any decisions on that. I would suggest you get with Mr. Hinkle and see if y'all can come to a resolution. There may be a document that would change the survey boundary lines. Or there may be a document that proves where the line is.
And I have the deeds. I have all the paperwork. And Kyle doesn't care where his lines are. He doesn't care if it's 100 foot that way. Like, he's not gonna do anything with that out there. But now the lines have changed again. So they were there.
Yeah, this is illegal.
And now they've changed again, so I'm just...
Hopefully y'all can come to a resolution without any legal action.
Yeah. We're gonna let Mr. Hinkle, I'd address this as well. I think that's something y'all need to work together on.
But I'm, where is the house? I'm confused.
Can we get an aerial of this area?
I can show you on my phone.
We'll pull the aerial up.
So we can all see it. So where's the house?
I don't know that I can show you like from the house.
Can you assist us with where our property is? Use the magic pen to...
It's the white house down in the bottom corner. You see the white roof?
That one there?
Yes. And if you go below that, south of it, you see a sliver of property between two rightaways. That is also their property. So, their property that used to be an acre is a rectangular shaped piece of property that is eaten up by Watermelon Road and the other road there. So they have a sliver of land between two rightaways that is unbuildable and unusable. That's where their...
So that's where the one acre comes from?
That's where their acreage disappeared to.
But the deed says that that's eight tenths of an acre that's the rightaway. And that that's one acre on that side of where the house sits.
I mean, the deed says what it says and it's monumented. We found the monuments in place that create the boundaries. I would, would be purely speculative to say that you might assume the boundary was further back and even further back by how much property has been cleared over onto Westervelt's side of the line. But, all of the markings of your property, or your dad's property, and Westervelt were found. We weren't creating those until Snyder created his 10 acres. And that point was set.
Could comment about where the property line is in relation to the visible house? Is that accurate as far, I mean, really can't do much about it, but property line is a property line.
I don't, I don't believe the three foot is correct, but it is. It appears to be closer than you would think because so much property has been cleared out behind the house.
There isn't any property cleared out behind the house. It's a gully. It's trees. It's a line of trees right here. And it's, when Westervelt came out, they looked, it's, it's, it's three foot. And when I called the tax assessor's office, he's, the mapping department is where they got me to. And they said, I understand how this is confusing because it doesn't match. Because there's 700 and something foot on this side, 300 and something foot on this side that didn't match up. Like, it didn't match up to the deed. That's, that's kind of random for like 724, 324. But when you walk out of the back door, the way that the line is, it's... You couldn't take the two steps and you're, and you're at the line.
How long's the house been there?
Oh God, it's old. It's old, old.
Is it, is that house right there?
Zach, what, what were we...
I don't know when it was originally built. I mean, I can look, but I don't wanna take y'all's trouble.
What are we asked to consider tonight?
Yeah, so I think this is outside of the realm of what we're trying to consider right now. I think this is something that they need to have a discussion of.
I agree. This is not our issue, but it's something that she wants to have addressed. But I mean, it's, the property lines, the property lines, I guess between the deeds and that's not really our...
I just wanna know where to get started.
I think you're, I think you're at a good starting point. Well, I think you're at a good starting point now where maybe Mr. Hinkle can help you out and just help you get clarification based on his information. He could probably guide you to where to go from there.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright. Anyone else care to speak for or against? I think this gentleman there is... Well, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Chris King, 11136 Kaziah Cut Off. I have adjoining property to this that was, I'm not sure where it is in relation to this map. I was unable to find it online. Where it says, you go to the, from the papers that you guys sent out. So, it's not plotted out on there, so I'm not sure. Not sure what's being done or presented to be done, to be, to be honest, so...
The petitioner's requesting to take this piece of property and make five lots up for resale.
Okay. Who is the seller?
Westervelt Realty, I believe, is the property owner.
And that's you?
No, no, he represents, he represents Westervelt. But Westervelt Land Company Realty is the ones that are requesting this.
Okay. So will it be residential property?
It's in the county, so I, but...
Yeah, it's still in the county, but if they ever come, want to ask the city, then it would come in as residential.
So it can be done whatever?
It could be done whatever, yep.
So, well, opposed for, again, we live in five different neighbors there that I come on their part to just, you know, to understand what was going on there. Again, one of the benefits, if you'll see that, it is a school district that splits with D Cunningham Road. We don't have the benefits of the, the preferred school zones. We've actually had some people move out of this area on the Kaziah Cut Off there or points in the opposite direction. So again, they would see the benefits there of those school zones. We're, you know, we would be interested in that if we could be part of that. But again, we're gonna be on the outside. Here again, we're, we're just north of the conversations you guys had earlier. So we see all of this coming in our direction fast. So we're very concerned with growth as it comes to our neighborhood, so...
Sure. Thank you sir. Just checking if you have any comments or... Anyone else care to speak for or against? Alright, having heard none. Commissioner Forrest, we have, we got the variance request, please, there are some. Commissioner Forrest, we have S-3525 Snyder Acres, consisting of five lots. No, what variance request, engineering has no issues with. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion approved.
Alright Commissioner, next up we have S-3825 Watkin Subdivision, a resurvey of Lot 1 Graco Edition Plat Number 1, consisting of three lots on approximately 3.3 acres located at 9601 Highway 69 South. This is Council District 2. You can see we're south here near the Wind Dixie. You all have seen this property before. It did come before you for a three lot subdivision. You can see here, it just had expired, so they're coming back before you with the same proposal. Here's that plat without contours. One variance request here. We did not receive any public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
Engineering, we had no issues with that lot. Congratulations. Thank you. Petitioner? Petitioner?
Good evening, Ruth Andover, Longleaf Engineering, 1927 Seventh Street. Yeah, like they said, you have already seen this before. We just made some minor changes during the design, getting ready for LDP, ALDOT submission, and incorporating some of those traffic study improvements that were required. That's all. And then if you need anything, have any questions, just let me know.
So nothing changed, what minor change you said, what were the minor change?
Yeah, I think the biggest change was moving that driveway towards the east. That was to kind of give those lots a better configuration for the driveway, move the intersection back, which benefits the 69 South intersection too.
Does that line, did it line up more? Or did it line up better with the existing driveway or access across the road? Does there be a trap?
There was no changes, you know, east and west. It's that driveway going north, south.
Okay.
That's what shifted to the east, yes.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Thank you. Anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? Having heard none. Commission before us, we have S-3825 Watkins Subdivision, three lots of division on South 69, which we had before. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
All right, next up we have S-4025 Smelsor Family Subdivision, consisting of two lots on approximately three point three-five acres located at 6354 Sanders Ferry Road and 6421 First Street. This is not in city limits. You can see we're just right off of Joe Malasham here. You see that property today is two lots. There is a cell tower, they're re-subdividing, going back with two lots to get that cell tower on its own lot. And here's that plat without contours. Two variance requests here, we did not have any public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
Engineering?
We're okay with those requests.
Petitioner?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Al Cavendish of Cavendish Engineering, representing the Smelsor family. This is really some estate planning, so this originally was a family home, of course, the kids are grown, everybody's still in Tuscaloosa, but no, nobody lives there currently. The, their mom is still alive, she would retain ownership of the lot, we're putting the cell tower on, and she would continue to receive that income, the rest of the property consolidated into one lot and be sold.
Pretty clear. Any questions for petitioner? Thank you. Anyone care to speak for or against? Seeing no one. Commission before us, we have S-4025, the Smelsor Family Subdivision. Two variance requests, engineering has no issues with, do I have a motion and a second?
Motion approved.
Second.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
All right, commission, last one tonight is S-4125, resurvey of lots 15 and 16, Block 407 TCIL, consisting of five lots on approximately point three-six acres located at 1002 19th Street and 1810 through 1812 10th Avenue, Council District Two. You can see we're just south of Central High School here. Looking at that property from above today, you see multiple structures. They're proposing five lots here. You can see the plan here without contours. We do have two variance requests, we did not receive any public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
Engineering, we talked about this, about the sidewalk, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
We would like to have one on 19th Street.
Al, we need to, we do need to extend the sidewalk in front of the property on 19th. Yeah, this...
Okay, okay.
This development may spurn future, you know, revitalization in this area, so let's, let's go ahead and run that sidewalk.
Run that sidewalk on that, okay.
Thank you, Al.
That'll be...
You don't say anything else, Al.
I aim to please tonight. We'll just work, work out the spacing on the LDP as far as the, as far as the landscape's drift and separation. There's a lot of room there. Okay. So, of course, this is an existing lot that we'd like to build five townhomes on. It's one of the early ones out the gate with the new zoning ordinance, so it meets all the setbacks for the 2025 zoning ordinance. Mike had talked to me about, this property's not in a flood zone, but they have, there are some local drainage areas, drainage issues down there, so we, we went and ran hydrology on this, the part that normally comes with the LDP. I'll be able to, I've got enough room to do enough storage to actually reduce the post-development to less than what the pre is.
Al, you're the last one here, you have the sidewalk.
It wound up distributed through the agenda tonight, I don't know how that worked. At least I didn't have to do them all at once, so...
Well...
See, I was, I was getting tired, so I gave in on the sidewalk so I could go eat.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that, too. All right, Al, thank you, we're...
Great, thank y'all.
No one's here to speak for or against, but we do have one, well, obviously, this is case, it's S-4125, the resurvey of the lot at 1002 19th Street. Petitioner has agreed to add sidewalks on the 19th Street side. So that being said, do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved. Anything else from staff? We are adjourned.